All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. Commissioners check in for Wednesday, October 22nd, 2025. It's 1:35 PM. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. I'm Vice Chair Commissioner Fornier on Zoom. Commissioner Hia to my left, Commissioner Klaus will be joining us shortly, and Commissioner Grant is excused for today. Check in. The meeting will be recorded and posted to the Thurston County YouTube channel within 24 hours. Written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of the meeting, and will be distributed to the Board. Action may be taken at this meeting. We have one substantive topic in our standing items for check-in, and the first item up is 2025 Periodic Comprehensive Plan Update Public Comments.
I'm the CPAD Director. E, table, thanks so much for taking yourself available to see Derek. And if you can walk us through at the Board's request some of the comments you can hear.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ashley Rice, CPAD Director, joined here by Derek Day, our Community Planning Manager. Appreciate this opportunity ahead of the public hearing to review the comment themes that are coming in for the Comprehensive Plan Update. Just.
Sorry, can you back up a little bit? As you're thinking about this calendar, as we lead into the public comment hearing, this is the kind of the culmination of all of this work. Is that right?
It is. Yes.
And so how, if the Board hasn't gone through this before, how would they best be listening to the presentation that you're about to?
I think listening to those comment themes, knowing that you're gonna probably receive comments on these items at the, at the public hearing, and that following the public hearing, we'll have to make decisions on what, you know, what the community is sharing with you. And so we will try to highlight those decision points so that your ears are tuned, tuned in on November 4th, and you feel prepared to give us feedback on any changes we're gonna have to make to the comprehensive plan before adoption at the end of the year.
So this is a big deal. So that if Commissioners aren't here hearing this, then we need to make sure that there is an understanding of what we're headed into in the public hearing.
Yeah, and we are always happy to have one-on-one sessions or follow-up work sessions following the public hearing to go over these and make sure that you feel ready.
Yeah, as those at the table and online know, this is a busy part of the year for county because our calendar year is also the same as our fiscal year. And, but there's also these important items that have to be resolved and be brought before the Board. So while everyone's doing a lot of different work during a holiday time, it's, it's great when Commissioners can identify with staff topics they're interested in or need more information on. I'd like to work that through so that we don't arrive to decision points and folks feeling like they may need more information, which is always appropriate. But with the way in which CPAD staff are making themselves available, I'd like to try to do that in advance so that folks feel like they can come to meetings ready to make a decision. Because as we have behind us, there's a, there's a timeline to the process, right?
Yeah, so this is a compilation of all the work sessions that we've had with the Board to date. So we've had seven so far. This is the eighth. And the Planning Commission recommendation, which is the public hearing draft, was sent to you before that September 17th work session.
And actually, we have a handout from the Commissioner. Commissioner Fornier?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say I'll, I'll be there in less than two minutes. I, I was trying to get in as much as the EDC Board meeting as I could. But right, you do, you got my full attention and I, and I appreciate this, 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 this presentation.
So since our public hearing with the Planning Commission, which was in April, so it was quite a while ago, we have collected all of these comments, about 61 received prior to, prior to sending you the packet last week. Since then, about 10 more have been received. So we'll try to touch on those as well. The comments prior to the hearing with the Planning Commission are hearings. There were two to try to maximize the level of engagement with the community. Those are in the hundreds, and those are also available online, and the links have been provided. And between now and November 4th, you will continue to receive comments. And if there are new comment themes or questions that you have, please just send them our way. There's probably additional background in the hundreds of document or hundreds of pages of documents that we have available. The chart up here just kind of shows some of the themes of the comments that we have been receiving. And you'll see right up at the top there, land use, housing, environment. So we structured today's board briefing with just some questions. And these are the questions you'll want to be asking yourself as you're listening to public comment come in on November 4th. So the first one, and this kind of relates back to the briefing that we had yesterday on the rezone applications. Should rural resource industrial uses, including warehouse distribution, be limited to those that only support agriculture, mining, and forestry? So right now, our current rural resource industrial zone does allow some limited warehouse distribution if it meets those locational, locational provisions that I know Commissioner Mensah, you always mention like the half a mile to it, to I-5, access to a railroad. Based on public comment, the Planning Commission did direct staff to go ahead and remove warehouse distribution from the list of uses in the RRI zone, and really to limit it or focus it on only those uses that would support ag mining and forestry. We have since received comments from property owners, not too many comments, but a few comments saying that that doesn't allow enough flexibility in the rural resource industrial zone to basically make adjustments to changing economic climates.
What if the warehouse is for agriculture, mining, or forestry?
There, there are limited provisions for those warehouses, but your general Costco warehouse distribution center would not be allowed.
It's not blanket against warehouses. It's weight blanket against outside of the ag industry.
Large-scale warehouse distribution. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I would just say that it really emphasizes the nexus to the natural resource industries. So that was the, I think the goal of the Planning Commission was to make sure that those were available to support the natural resource industries and not eaten up by other development.
Yeah, that the, that those uses can locate within UGAs or cities rather than out in rural counties. So just wanna just wanna highlight. I'm gonna stop highlighting. I just want to highlight that for you because you, you might recent public hearing on that. Okay, so this is another one that's come up, a, a comment theme. So what is in the draft comprehensive plan right now is there's essentially a hard cap for limiting rural growth, 5% as a percentage of total countywide growth. And there, we have received comments since then and have had discussions with the Planning Commission about whether, rather than having a hard cap, this should become more of a target which would provide flexibility and allow us to monitor progress and adjust strategies over time to move toward that goal. A hard cap, at least as it's currently written and the conversations we've had with legal, are that it creates a fixed requirement that the county must meet regardless of changing conditions, and that we could even have to delay adoption of the comp plan until we develop strategies for how to meet that hard cap. So you'll, I'm sure you will hear comments about that 5%, but just wanna set the stage for the big decision point is gonna be, is it a target or hard cap?
So the hard cap means you're saying this comp plan couldn't be adopted if it didn't have more specific.
Implementing code.
Implementing code. What would that look like?
Um, the.
How do you do it?
Downzone would be the easiest way. I mean, if you have to develop, you have to develop implementing code to go along with your comp plan to achieve 5% rural growth within the next six months, the adoption of the comp plan, that's really the only mechanism that I can think of. I don't know, Derek, if you wanna.
Just explain, you can just say downzone, explain that to like a property owner who will take place.
Yeah, so most of the zoning in rural county is rural resource residential, so one house per five acres. However, we, you know, we've got a lot of acreage out in the county that even if that's a zoning, they might have 12 acres. We would essentially tell them that now you can only have one house per 10 acres. So they would no longer be able to divide that land. We could also have requirements for a lot, essentially lot consolidation. So to, you would have to assemble a certain amount of acreage before you were allowed to do something in those zones. And so the, the feedback we received from legal on this is that the way it's currently written, it's not, it's not bad to have it as a policy target, but the way it's currently written is really more of a mandate or a hard cap rather than this target that we want to achieve over the 20-year planning period and will be monitoring and adjusting strategies as needed to, to achieve it.
So I, I can imagine many different ways that that could be done, right? All of which would be controversial and difficult, and I don't see how something like that could be done like this year.
It would be really challenging, which is, I think, why legal is bringing the concern up.
To go through a humongous process to, to be able to get input on. Because I mean, even like, you know, downzoning, I mean, like, that's a, where, where, like, where, you know, like, what, the entire rural area is, like, where, who would, who would be the losers or who would be the affected parties? Like, how would you decide that? And how, you couldn't just throw a dart at a map. You'd have to go through some kind of criteria and evaluate the process to, with some sensible criteria to choose the areas versus others. And I mean, I can imagine a world where that needs to be done, but I cannot imagine a world where that could be done in a month.
No, and in policies, when I said six months, I was thinking about the minimum amount of time it would take to just produce a now, like analyses to even scope what, what that is. But yes, it would be a, a lot of analysis. I'm just, this is, this has had a lot of community interest. I know there are a lot of stakeholders that care about the 5%.
Like, sorry, like, but that, that percentage, the way you explained it, it almost seems like it's not even a real thing. Like, it's, like, it's not tied to any number of houses in any real way. It's almost kind of arbitrary. And then when you're talking about 5% of houses in the, in that target area, it was, it was even a small number. So like, at, right, like, even if it was 10%, that really didn't change.
So these are, thank you.
But it's hard for people to understand.
There's, there's a couple of different ways to get at it, but as we're going through these, these are, these are exactly the questions that you, as the Board, should be considering, the conversations we've had, the history on the comments that have been provided. So what we want to do here is pose these questions and then go through them and then come back to what information you might need previously to have that conversation. So you're not wrong. And then just to call back to the broader conversation, this is the, the whole range of things that, like, the Planning Commission took up was looking all the way at from, we just let kind of business as usual, we just kind of keep on our 14% track, and we don't change anything. And then on that far other spectrum is that hard cap 5%. And then the middle ground was really, we shoot for that 5% target, and we look at all of the dials we have short of the hard cap dials, which are the downzones, to see how far we can get and see if we can achieve the objectives that we were trying to get with that 5% hard cap with a little smoother, little bit more creative, put more tools on the table.
And I would say, Commissioner Fornier, that there are folks who see that as positive and see that as negative. So it's not just, it's not arbitrary. It's, it is, it is something that folks are advocating for or folks are.
But it doesn't play out how people think it actually does. It's like what I kind of understood, like it.
It, it's a community-driven goal, but it is one that's really important to the community. And so it's, it's really gonna be up to the, the Board. You're right. There isn't a state requirement.
I think what he's asking, though, is what's the impact?
Yeah, like, I, I understand, like, the, the goal and, like, when I see that, why somebody would be attached to, like, that statement or that, like, goal piece. But the way you've explained it is it doesn't really translate the way, like, in reality, the way people think it does when they read it. Like, when you were, you were saying, like, that, what that would actually mean as far as the number of houses throughout the county, and I, I mean.
It is not a number that was derived from like a, a data, a data-driven analysis that, that we've done. Now, I was a part of the Sustainable Thurston process that created this number, but it's not a number that, you know, we did an environmental analysis across the county to arrive at 5% as being the optimal number.
And I think the, the sensitivity, Commissioner, is that there's folks that are, that are passionate on both sides of, of that number for it. And, and so I think what staff are trying to be careful is thread that needle of providing information, but not advocating. We don't want to say, yeah, that number's a huge impact, or no, it's, it's not really consequent, it's inconsequential.
Was it, you told us last time, that if, whether even if it was a 15% growth target, there would be no environmental impact?
We didn't say.
The county?
We didn't say no. Our environmental impact statement looks at, you know, it's the whole county. And so it didn't, it didn't identify as a, a big difference, but there could be localized impacts. So I don't want to say that there's no environmental impacts. It's just when you're looking at a county-wide scale and looking at things like traffic impact.
But there's other alternative ways to mitigate those impacts that you, you'd mentioned that could, like, if it was, if there was a higher percentage, or if it was 10, like, there's other things that you could fold into the development code, like impermeable or permeable hardscapes and things like that, right?
There, there are other tools in the toolbox for achieving, achieving positive environmental outcomes. Yep. And, and I think that Derek had mentioned that the Planning Commission discussed a range of tools. Tools like that are in there as well. It's like if, if we are monitoring where we're at and we, we do actually attach some hard numbers to this and have a baseline, then we can monitor and see, are we achieving, achieving the environmental outcomes that, that we hope to as a county and then make adjustments as needed.
So if you can't put a hard cap on 5%, but you can put in, like, fold in other methods to minimize the environmental impact?
Yeah, you can have a target, and then as a community, we're working toward that target, and we're actively monitoring the progress we're making toward that target. And as a policymaking body, as policies and decisions are coming before you, or you or your folks who are here in 10 years, they're looking at that and saying, like, does this policy align? Will it get us closer to that, or does it not align?
Yeah, because staff aren't, aren't advocating, th- that's what's difficult in this conversation. Staff are not advocating for this position. Staff are saying this is what has been, these are the comments that have come forward.
Planning Commission came up with the hard cap?
They.
Didn't know the legal input that we might have to go through, like, these implementing code changes. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I would say a lot of that is coming out of case law that's going through right now. So this is really, this is emerging information because as you have the counties that went before us, you have Snohomish, King, Pearson, Kitsap, that all had to go through this last year. A lot of those, a lot of those comprehensive plan updates are being appealed. And some of those appeals are specifically about you didn't have the implementing code language for these goals and your policy statements that you are making. And so to be, you know, just want you all to, want the Board to consider that if, if it is written as a hard cap, we might get appealed on, on that same.
Yeah.
Same grounds.
If that were the, the case, I mean, I would feel that even if I was dead set that we needed a hard cap, I would be based on that. I mean, if, if I, you know, it's not possible to do, like, without, I mean, we can do it next year maybe and change it, or, I don't know, you know, what, what things could be done after the fact, but I don't see any realistic way to put that kind of implementing provisions into this, into, because I would, I would want to take that really deliberately and, and systematically if we were gonna be actually thinking about doing something. I'm not saying I would never do it. I just, I'm not doing it in a month. Like, that's a process that would take a lot of time. So, you know, that's something that maybe would have to be done in phases at the, at, at the very least.
So is there recommended the language that staff is recommending for that piece?
We, we will, this is really to present this to you, and we will be developing that once we get Board feedback following the November 4th hearing.
Everyone here, your perspectives on what we should be developing as a draft before we develop the draft?
Okay, let's go. Actually, if, if we could, just because can we explain the context where these are coming from and, and their staff involvement, or that line of staff involvement to say, this is our recommendation versus is the comments or the sort of planning commission is coming through?
I've directed my staff to be stewards of a process and not, not to be an advocate on any of these items. And so, sorry if my answers don't, they're not as clear as yes or no, but it's really presenting what we've heard so that you can make an informed decision. But on all of these, what you see up here, what's in the document that it's going to public hearing has been informed by community input, conversations with the Planning Commission, or input from, you know, our partners or implementers, but it's, it's not staff advocating. And so we're always happy to provide more, more information. Okay, so this is one, I think you actually had someone come to a 2 o'clock meeting and bring up this as an item, and we have since received a few comments along these lines. So this is in regards to detached accessory dwelling units leading up to the public hearing with the Planning Commission. There are concerns about allowing attached accessory dwelling units in the rural area. We currently allow attached ones, but for detached, you, you have to meet underlying density requirements. So we did develop a proposal that, you know, tried to align with where the case law and state law are on detached accessory dwelling units, taking into consideration things like rural character and whatnot. But we have since received comments from folks throwing out the idea of, you know, can detached accessory dwelling units not be limited to 800 square feet like they are in the public hearing draft, or whether they can be increased, whether that size can be increased to 1,000 square feet? And that is consistent with what is gonna be allowed in cities and UGAs with the new state laws. And whether having a 100-foot requirement for this proximity to the primary dwelling is, is necessary. So the comments are, can, there be just more flexibility essentially with detached accessory dwelling units?
The Planning Commission said keep it within 100 feet of the house.
Planning Commission, they, they reviewed the code. They didn't, they didn't necessarily give us feedback to change what those were. But you all as the Board get to decide based on feedback you hear on whether those are appropriate or not.
It's allowed.
This is a tough one. This is like unresolved case law. So.
We could be the first.
We could be the first. So I will say that we got, we have gotten unanimous feedback from the Planning Commission that yes, detached accessory dwelling units are a housing option that we should make available to our rural communities. The 800 square foot requirement and that 100-foot distance from the primary dwelling, it was staff's way of saying, if this is what the Planning Commission wants, and given all the, like, the case law that's out there, we think this is a, this is a conservative approach. If the Board wants to increase it to 1,000 square feet or eliminate that proximity to the primary dwelling, it may increase the risk of appeal. It could be appealed even as-is. This is, this is unresolved, and in the last three legislative sessions, there have been proposals to just outright permit detached accessory dwelling units in rural areas, and to date, the, the state hasn't adopted those changes. So I want to highlight it. It, it really is up to the Board. And I wish I could give a clear answer about whether 1,000 square feet is permissible or not.
At a certain point, like, you're just doubling the zoning. I mean, like, 1,000 feet is more, you know, like a small house, and there's no limit to the density requirement. Doesn't matter, doesn't matter where it's located. You're basically just saying if it's one to five, no, it's two to five, right? But it's not gonna be, not every parcel is gonna be eligible to put something on. If there's other, if it's five acres and there's sensitive areas here, and there's oak trees there, and, you know, there's. Well, I know, but that's true. I mean.
Most of these are limited by sewer, like, septic and well capacity. Oh, it just in terms of, like, do you, is your septic sized to accommodate an additional unit? So we've been coordinating really closely with environmental health on these provisions, because even with our current provisions, our zoning code might say yes, and then you go to environmental health and it, there are sanitary codes which are being.
Accommodate.
They can't accommodate. Their sanitary codes are getting stricter at the same time that state law is making it easier around housing. So that's why that close coordination is so important, because we don't want people at one counter getting told yes and then going to a different counter and being told no.
Can we be sued for saying that we aim for or require, but let's just say aim for 5% rural growth target? And then we're changing, we're basically just poorly liberalizing ADUs in the rural area. I mean, how is that consistent?
I think that we could make an argument for someone who might sue us, but I see your point.
I mean, it's a tension, right? It's directly contradictory to the 5% rural growth target.
And it's why there are some who see the 5% growth target as problematic. There are some that see it as, do exactly what you just said, as favorable. But yes, it's like, you can't say we're gonna restrict one hand, and then we're gonna allow this other, kind of open up this other area, see this operate. And then these are just specific nuanced questions, but you're hitting on the bigger theme of which way, which direction does this county want to go? And then folks that are on the side of Thurston County needs more available housing, they see this as positive, and then there's folks that say, well, make available housing in the urban cores and not out in these areas because you're gonna create more problems.
Yeah, I think where our Planning Commission landed was on the housing side. Like, this is one of the only affordable housing options available to rural communities. They also talked about if attached accessory dwelling units are already allowed, this is really just a matter of what it looks like rather than whether two families or an extension of your family are residing on the same piece of property. But they really went for more flexibility for affordable housing and rural communities. And there really just aren't a lot of options in rural areas. But that'll, you're definitely gonna hear comments. And so I think the, the big decision points are, does the Board support detached accessory dwelling units? And if you do, do you want them to be 1,000 square feet? And, and provide more flexibility for where they are located on the site? Using the same septic and well is already going to require a clustering of the units on a particular site. But whether you want to harden fast 100 feet or whether there's more flexibility there. So kind of two-parter questions that you'll get to consider.
And if I can offer just one thing, so the way that something like this could work with like a soft, if we went with like that soft cap and using a whole bunch of different tools and monitoring over time, that puts us in like an adaptive management cycle. So if in like the first couple of years of, of, you know, a new detached ADU policy, we see this like flood of applications come in, and it really might start to frustrate that 5% goal. Like, it's an opportunity for us to look back and see if it needs to be tuned. I mean, that could even tell us that there's maybe enough demand to use it as a TDR program in the future. So that softer cap really gives us that ability to, like, see how we're doing and adjust over time.
Cluster developments. I'm, is that a term that the Board is familiar with? Because if not, I can provide just a, a general overview of what a cluster development.
Just do that.
Okay, just do that. Great.
Commissioners aren't here, and I don't know what they know.
Okay.
They're gonna watch this presumably.
So we are continuing to receive comments about cluster developments specifically around density bonuses, project size, and timing of the changes that were made to the development code around these. So cluster development is a land use tool. It allows homes to be grouped on smaller lots. If you think of like a 100-acre parcel out in the rural area, if it's zoned for one house per five acres, you could potentially get 20 homes on that site. What a cluster development allows you to do is pick those 20 homes and cluster them in either one part of that parcel or spread out in little clusters around that parcel, and then. In either one part of that parcel or spread out in little clusters around that parcel and the the goal is to retain. This larger resource parcel, so instead of these little five acre homesteads, um you end up with twenty homes. And potentially an eighty acre, we call them resource parcels and that could be for a farm. Um if you're familiar with the Deschutes River Preserve, um that all the ecosystems is developing, um that was actually a resource parcel. Um for a cluster development, now we do have someone um Thurston County that are like for equestrian, um they're used for equestrian facilities. Um and but think of it as just, it's a larger set aside, um so it has become a really. Um critical conservation tool, um and it is called out in our habitat conservation program as one of the priority tools. For avoidance and mitigation um for prairie um conservation. So that's what a cluster development is and um what it will hopefully achieve. So the planning commission has unanimously supported incentives for cluster development, what that looks like largely are density bonuses. Um as a community, we used to have density bonuses and that's actually when most of the cluster developments worked. Were developed here, um it's more expensive to do a cluster development, so the community benefit is you get this big resource parcel, you can conserve. Ag, you can conserve habit, prairie habitat. But it's usually more expensive for a developer to develop because they have to put in a community septic system, they potentially have to purchase water rights. Um so rather than, you know, twenty straws in the ground, which is what you would get in a traditional subdivision. They actually have to go and purchase a water right, you don't get those twenty straws in the ground with these permit exempt wells, um they actually have to. You know, demonstrate that the water is available. But all that just means additional costs, so the way as a community, we can help offset that cost is through these incentives or density bonuses. So that's the density bonus side and we have received a a lot of, uh we've received. Feedback from the building and development community that, you know, that that might be a way to to get more of these cluster developments on the ground. We've received feedback from the tribes in particular that they really see this as an important water resource protection tool. Because every time you take twenty straws in the ground and you replace it with a water right, you are protecting water for salmon. So we have received um uh letters from both the Squaxon Tribe and this Shaheilis Tribe in in support of it as a tool. Um so getting to the the timing of the changes, so the density bonus um was something that was. Presented um with the planning commission public hearing draft, um following up on that, we received specific feedback. From our conservation partners, um these are our habitat conservation partners, so Center for Natural Lands Management, D F W. Um the Conservation District, J B L M, that we had a. Say barrier and sort of, well, yeah, barrier to creating um habitat parcels in our current code. So our current code, project size, max hundred acres. So if you have a farm that's, let's say, three hundred acres, large cattle ranch, nice prairie habitat, three hundred acres. To go through our current cluster development, you would have to do three projects, three separate projects. In timed out over, let's say, three plus years, so you couldn't come in with one project, one three hundred acre project. You'd have to split them up into three separate ones and what we heard from our conservation partners was. This really is not implementing the intent of the H C P, we're not able to achieve these larger cohesive resource parcels. Um we would like the project size to be increased, so we did increase it four hundred acres. Or to four hundred acres, sort of looking around at what those larger scale like farms or ranches are that we have on the landscape. Um in full transparency, that was a change that was made after the planning commission public hearing draft. Um but it is in the draft now and so the public process for folks who have, and you know, concerns or ideas about that change. Will be able to engage in the board process, so although there isn't a procedural error, we do wanna make sure that it's on the record. Um that there there was a change there and that isn't, that's something that we have to do as staff as we're continuing our stakeholder feedback. Uh our stakeholder outreach on development code changes, um and so, you know, with actually. I think it's the next question, um there have been some small tweaks since the public hearing draft, cause we've been proactively working with implementing stakeholders.
Can you walk through the comments that you've received that oppose this? These density bonuses to incentivize cluster developments, what's the, I mean, if it's environmentally positive, it helps habitat connectivity, it helps. H C P, helps water, you have tribes, who's who's against it, cause you're saying this is a question.
Yeah.
Getting comment on.
Um rural character, sort of how it looks, do our rural landscapes start looking more suburban? Um as you're driving down the road and you see twenty homes on one acre lots, you know, right along the roadway. Um does that just look like an extension of our U G A, um so I think there's visual impact.
Alternative is houses spread all over the place.
Could be, the the benefits of having more clustered together is that.
Yeah.
You incentivize the use of those community water systems and community septic system, so it's a balance of the way it looks. Versus what your conservation and environmental outcomes are. Um I will say, we did not do like a big wholesale, community-driven update to the cluster developments. What we tried to do was take the planning commission's policy intent of how do you incentivize these? And then try to just find small tweaks, so there would be opportunities in the future, I think, to do a more wholesale update. To cluster development standards.
The peo- the folks that I've talked to in the rural community, uh it seems supportive of this kind of thing and then the comments that I read that we've received. Commenting on caring about rural character are not people, and then they have their address at the bottom of the public comment. And they're not part of the rural community, you know, like they are, it it so it seems weird to me that, you know, like the comments that you sent to us earlier. They, you know, those were not people, you know, advocating for rural character that live in the rural community. You know, you go down and you talk to people in the rural community and there's a preference to keep the open spaces. And to have, you know, preserve farmland and, you know, the the cluster development, it, I mean, it just seems like a a. A simple solution on how to how to truly preserve kind of that outdoor space. So there's there seems like there's a weird disconnect in public comment on this one.
So I have a question, I'm looking at my notes from that, I went to that Wildlings conference about habitat connectivity. And they brought up clusters and I actually asked the question because I knew there was kind of. Sort of something coming up for us to consider and some back and forth about it, so. My notes say, huh, see if you can help me ask Janice, I wrote cluster developments good and then it said. It might, this, the answer was it might make sense to target that, like to have some to target it, at least maybe this was about trying to come up with. Like what they were saying was to avoid some of the, just to make it widespread anywhere and anywhere, like you could have like. If it, if it felt like you'd have a habitat connectivity, like they have overlays they're working on, you could say like, if it was within one of those zones. You know, that so that there was this extra reason to do it, then you could, you know, have like bigger incentives or incentives at all. Versus just saying, yeah, anywhere you can come up with to do it, you can do it, you know, like they were saying, you might wanna. Have a more focused and targeted approach to how you allow them. Especially where there were habitat connectivity points, cause you know, we're trying to create these corridors and there's overlays that are you mapping that you can look at to do that. That was one idea, then the other thing they said was. Uh the cluster versus a an conservation subdivision, which was some other concept and I don't, I didn't write down what that meant, I don't really remember what that meant.
I use the term interchangeably.
Okay.
Um I I have looked up both, conservation subdivision, I do think is a more appropriate term when you're talking about a rural area. But cluster development is the one that more people are familiar with and if you Google cluster development, you'll find way more examples. Than if you Google conservation subdivision.
Say slash.
So you can.
Cluster developments slash conservation.
Well, and to make it really fun, our code says planned rural residential development, P R R D, so it doesn't really use either, so. Yes, at some point, it'd be really nice if we just called it conservation subdivision and we actually have, you know. Provisions in our code that refer refer to it, in an urban environment, um a lot of times what you're trying to achieve is more open space. Um and, you know, a courtyard concept and so it it looks different than in a rural area where the. Goal is really water resource and land conservation, um.
Agricultural land as well as habitat connectivity.
But there are, you know, I don't think it's, what you have right here is just sort of like small tweaks to try to. Help with implementation of the H C P, I do think it'd be worthwhile for the board to consider a future docket item. That does open it up more um to help implement other, other elements of the code. Or I'm sorry, the comp plan, like the wildlife habitat connectivity, I mean, we've got carryovers of like golf courses as being a resource parcel and. Probably doesn't fit within this idea of conservation subdivision to have a golf course be the resource parcel, so there are other things that. Um could be done and the the changes right now, we're more minimal looking at, how do we encourage folks to. Switch from the twenty straws in the ground to buying water rights, cause that really supports. Conservation of water for salmon and to try to get these larger resource parcels, cause we're going through a generational shift right now. With a lot of our ag properties and we don't wanna miss opportunities with that generational shift. To hold on to as much of that ag land as possible in these kinds of resource parcels.
Any other questions on that one?
And I'm sure you'll continue here more. Okay, last one, um and I I wanna throw out there, we do have active land use applications. For battery energy storage system facilities, so this item is really just focused on the code updates. Not at all the land use applications, cause they will likely get appealed and so I wanna make sure you all preserve your ability to sit in on that appeal. So.
Let me jump on there real quick, so that she's giving the board a caution flag on that, so as this process is going through on the comprehensive plan. You may get individuals that have applications in the queue for battery energy storage system, they're gonna come looking like B S. Uh is a term of art that people use, so if they come to you with an application and they say, I need you to talk about this, I wanna talk about this application as it relates to the rezone. You need to just take a, take a breath, take a minute and we're here to help. Uh if it gets you into a place where you might have to not have your ability to make a legislative decision or cause a judicial.
So the um the code updates related to this are to implement the climate element. Um and so therefore battery energy storage systems, we also have a number of code updates related to solar. Um we currently don't have regulations over these things, these are emerging new technologies and so we're using existing code language like. Public facilities and things like that that don't fully address what these new uses are on the landscape, so. The code updates are really limited to establishing standards and a permit pathway for them. Um the comments that we've received since the planning commission have have been from industry representatives, um we are. We're hearing a lot um from the industry representatives and so they are asking for expanded zone allowances. Um reduce setbacks, higher thresholds before triggering like hearing examiner or review. Um other commenters have requested allowing these facilities in rural residential zones. But with sort of thresholds on um the size of the the parcel. What the proposal is trying to do that's before you is balance um the community and industry residents. Rural residents through the pro- through this process, um have definitely boys concerned about locating facilities near their homes. Um we've also heard from the fire dist- um the fire districts, I will say our um our lead on this, Maya Tippel. Has been working really closely um with Fire Chiefs Association and our surrounding jurisdictions to try to develop a code package that won't just work for us. But that the cities could then adopt as well, so we have a consistent regional approach to what this looks like, um. So through that process, she she definitely has learned a lot, um but what we've also heard from Puget Sound Energy and folks at the state is that. These projects are essential to support the clean, reliable electric grid of the future, so balancing. Community feedback with clean energy grid, um.
Let's let's jump on that real quick, so that's part of the climate change portion, also you'd mentioned that. And so the way that the best system, I'm saying this out loud and then correct me if I'm wrong, the battery energy storage system sits on a site located. It can be attached to either the power electric grid or solar panels, that energy feeds into the battery, battery stores that energy and it can be used. In the evenings when it's a solar panel or at uh during peak periods, you wouldn't have to use the grid. And so using that B S during those periods could reduce the perspective is the reliance on fossil fuels to climate change. Production, so that's why it's all kind of tied together, but again, like Ashley said, this is a new emerging technology, so we're working to understand it.
And and it's a very fast changing technology, as we've heard from the industry.
It's the fire department.
When they catch on fire, they're still trying to figure out what the best, but the best approach is, so a lot of the. The conditions um or standards associated with these will be about fire management, fire and emergency management.
Because older units were um. Notorious for catching on fires spontaneously.
Hard, you're the expert, but sorry, what I read, it said they're hard fires to put out when they start because of the chemicals that are involved in.
And so um P S C did a presentation on the new. Technology that she used and the safe me- the um different measures they have in place, that was shared with the board.
What what did the planning commission do with this?
It it's part of the the planning commission recommendation, this is another area where the development code has been evolving, so we're happy to. Provide like the red line of any changes that have been made in response to that feedback. That Maya has been receiving from the fire districts and engagement with our regional stakeholders on what this would look like. And it may continue to change, I would say of all of the, all the questions up here, this one. Might be one where staff would recommend, if depending on what we hear at the public hearing, maybe we pull this off. And because it's a development code update, it doesn't have to be part of your once a year package, so. If you want to spend more time digging into it, cause it is complex and the fact that we do have. Land use applications coming in the door, it might be just an area where, you know. An additional work session just on this would be necessary, but it would be hard to do that before the end of the year, so I just wanna throw that out there as an idea, we're not trying to push this. Um we know that jurisdictions across this state um are trying to figure out um what this looks like, cause this is statewide initiative. Um it's also important to note that we are just one permitting pathway, local jurisdictions are, there isn't two other permitting pathways. One of which is for developers to go straight to the state energy facility site evaluation council, so I wanna make sure I got all that right, F Sec. Yes, um it has its own permitting process and it can override local regulations, right now. It's a more laborious process than the local jurisdictional process, so developers are still coming through. Local jurisdictional permitting processes, um but what we.
We become, we can reduce our workload by.
Yeah, what we have seen is, there's gonna be a growing trend of these types of facilities probably just going through F Sec. Um and not necessarily engaging at the local level.
However, if we're able to make our regulations work in a way that we've talked about where we make the hoops fewer but clearer. It would be helpful for us on the local level to have that local input if we add that permitting process.
There is a kind of a sweet spot regulatorily where they'll wanna off-ramp versus come through our process.
Yeah, and I I think on behalf of the the fire districts, I would say like maintaining our influence and oversight. Um would be a good thing, but it's figuring out what what those standards are that in, you know, ensure. Our life safety. So that's, you know, I just have to say. That's a pretty short list, as you consider the breadth of the comprehensive plan update and all the development code changes. Just a testament to the planning commission and all the work they did to listen to community feedback, incorporate it. Uh it's not to say that you're not gonna hear things that aren't on this list, but it's a pretty short list for the board. Um to consider um as we're moving into that public hearing draft.
Could we go back to this?
Yes. You know, facts, it's moving.
So just to highlight, we gotta celebrate the clicker when we can. Uh just to highlight what Ashley's saying out of. Uh, just to highlight what Ashley's saying, out of all of these topics that you've heard over the past months, since July. The questions, the major themes of the public comments narrowed down to just those few questions. That's what the big deal is. There, there're gonna be some tough things to consider for the board to discern and think about. But out of those major topics that have gone through. The work that staff has put into creating transparency for the planning commission to understand issues. Uh, the planning commission doing their due diligence and providing the recommendations to the board. This is, and this is coming from the former director of the. This is the best process I've seen in the update thus far. So really, well done. Thank you for that.
And we're on time.
This is pretty spectacular, honestly. I mean, the, it's like most of the meetings that I had were climate related. And, you know, looking at your chart, I mean, you know, recomments and stuff, I mean. I know a lot of the things were addressed. We worked together on that. And then I know that. There were still other things that were still being addressed and I wasn't sure how they had all worked out, but I'm, I'm, I'm seeing preliminary indication that a lot of good work was done and. Common ground was found on some of that, because that even wasn't, that even wasn't even one of your topics of.
No, and like I said, we don't have a crystal ball. So between now and November fourth. There could be five more topics that get added, but thi- this is what we have.
But it's, I mean, like say, I, I can get my mind around these big questions. Um, and. Um, yeah, I mean, just commit, I'm remembering back to some other ones. Joshua, remember, remember the whole, all the mining stuff?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, those like, and we were like, we just went around in circles just trying, how do we even present this to the board for, it was only three commissioners. And we couldn't like even figure out how to, how to package the decisions in, in a way that could be discussed. They were so complex. And we, it's, staff ended up doing a pretty good job, I think, walking us through, not before you, Ashley, but you know, like. This is very straightforward in, in my view compared to something like that.
Yeah, having cleared the decks and provided the space for the team to be able to have a longer runway, I think this is the result of those meetings.
Yeah, I, I just wanna say like huge thank you. I mean, even with that. With Howard Deuce, I have five pages of notes like that I've been writing through, right? Just. Um, because even though they're all reduced, they're, they're pretty dense and, you know, I appreciate this time to kind of. Get to chew through them before the public comment, because then it'll be easier for me as public comment is coming through to pick up on the themes of what we've discussed. Um, and so I, I appreciated, definitely appreciate this session today.
Yeah, like has been said previously, um. Aside from budget and a few other topics, this is one of the biggest ones that has the eyes of the community on it. So being here, listening. If you're not able to be here to re-watch these videos and the conversation and check in with staff for or after the public hearing. Like we're available. This is one of the things that is gonna have a lot of attention. And the Board of County Commissioners is gonna feel pressure from multiple different angles. So having the information and to be able to stand firm on the information that you've been provided. And not be swayed after with the, whatever the next comment is, that's gonna be really important as you make this decision-making process. It's difficult. This is not gonna be easy. These land use decisions impact people's lives. Uh, they impact the community that we live in. Uh, but I think from my perspective, Thurston County has done a good job of having these hard conversations. Some communities don't have these conversations in this detailed manner, and you can drive through those communities and see what those counties look like. But Thurston County has done a really nice job historically and continues to do so. So, thank you for your work.
And from a timing perspective, I will say you'll probably hear comments. Um, that are really, you know, you'll have to decide, is it something that has to be done now as part of this comp plan update? Or your docketing conversation, essentially the work planning conversation for CPED is coming up next year. And it might be something that is appropriate for our future work plan. So rather than having it. You know, baked into this comprehensive plan update or potentially delay this, it's like, oh no, that's, that's actually in the implementation plan. That's an appropriate item for us to take up um as a priority for this community to, to resource um over the next few years.
Okay, good with Ashley. Thank you. Very good guys.
Thank you.
Next up is uh external boards and commissions, committees. Commissioner Forni, I'm looking at you. I know you guys have a big EOB. I'd like to hear about that.
So, so we had the uh Experience Olympia Board Visitor Convention Bureau meeting yesterday. Um, it wa- it was good. They, they, they haven't voted. To put our position on the board yet, but they recognize that they are going to put one on the board and. And we told them that the board voted to make that meet with the alternative Commissioner Grant. So, so that was discussed. They've also added some new folks to the room. Uh, like the, so the EDC and the VCB had had a split, like a major riff. Uh, that, that had occurred, they're rebuilding that bridge and Aslan Mead is back on the VCB board. I use VCB and not EOB, I can't change which one. And uh, and so he was added back on there. I think his perspective is gonna be good, cause he had a long history of being on there. And they added him to their executive board last night. Uh, so that was positive. Um.
Representing the EDC.
Representing the EDC. And then uh, you know, there were mayors in the room. They were kinda giving their perspective on what they wanna see going forward with the, the VCB. Um, there was a lot of talk about just making sure that there's uh kind of a realignment of goals and vision. For the jurisdictions and the organization. The, the VCB staff and board. Uh, are really listening to that now. It felt like they kinda weren't hearing it for a while, but they, they really opened up that door. And they sent out an email to everybody like two weeks ago, kind of acknowledging some of the stuff that we talked about and requested. One of those things was to not rush into a, finding a new permanent director. Uh, to take a step back and hire an interim director to give some kinda space between the last one that is no longer with them. Kind of doing some rebuilding before they put one in there. And we'd also talked about the. Having whoever that interim director be uh kind of work with the different jurisdictions and shareholders to find out what. They want the VCB to be structured like. And, you know, if there's ways to, you know, kind of redo the. Organization to make it sure, make it so we can't get out of alignment like we did. Um, and I, I thought it was all positive. They, they have a couple of names in the hopper for interim director. Um, they have a committee assigned to go through those names and decide on one. Um, we'll see where that goes. Uh, and then, like you heard earlier, it was kind of a surprise to hear him talking about the FIFA thing. Cause they really hadn't been talking at the table where we were talking about that. So it seemed really weird and. In like two years ago, a year ago, we were told no, they would, they wanted nothing to do with it. So I think that was another thing where they recognized, hey, you know, our, our partners want us involved in this. That it sounded like they've been working with the, with the Thurston Chamber on that. And so, you know, Leonard Riker County Manager Hernandez recognized that. Uh, there's a way that he could kinda try to tie them a, them a little better to that effort.
Especially when I heard them talking about how there's like an organization of the DMOs or whatever they're called and. And like some of the, in some of the fan zones, it's the VCB that's doing it. So. Whatever we can learn from like them, even if it's just an information conduit, I think we should have them at the table. And, cause we can learn from what everyone's doing.
And that was where we started the conversation, when, you know, we kinda thought it would be housed there. And I think, I still think that would have been appropriate. It just wasn't an option with that organization at the time. Did you have any, did I miss anything?
It was great to see.
We're asking you, but I don't know.
Great to see the mayor of Olympia and city manager there, uh, the mayor of Tumwater there as well. So. Um, they really felt heard um based on the letter that was submitted to them and then the response and then be invited to the table to talk. Uh, it, it's appears that the um Experience Olympia Beyond are really open. To increasing that communication point. Thought Mayor um Payne did a great job of communicating that. There needs to be a, a look at how do we pull together regionally and Commissioner Forni also communicated that, that there's a lot of. Things that we should be doing regionally together and activating the um EOB in that process. So. I think it was also great that the conversation about elected officials' roles got discussed and really debunking. That elected officials can't be part of certain things when they do that for their boards and they do that in their own capacity. Um, so there was a, a great openness from the um, the, the current board to say, oh yeah, we're, we're willing to rethink that. And they voted um council member Nick Dunin from Lacey to the selection committee for the interim. Um, bringing that perspective on, which I thought was a great step. And um, the mayor of Olympia commented on, we don't want to step forward with leaving one of the jurisdictions' perspectives behind. So. I think it was, it was a good step forward.
Yeah, I, I think there, there were, there were a lot of really difficult and uncomfortable conversations over the last year with that, with the different groups involved. But staying consistent on the message, I think it resulted in a, a good outcome. So.
Let me give a special thanks to um the EOB member Amy Evans for. She's not on the executive board, but as a board member, I think she's done an amazing job of connecting with different stakeholders. From the different jurisdictions and their board to elevate conversations. And to really be focused on what solutions can we put forward? And then working with our organization to quickly acknowledge, yep, we didn't do this right, so we're gonna, we're gonna switch over. I think that was a, a good um climate by which then change is taking place and uh fo- folks are. Looking like they're focused on solutions now.
EDC board meeting was not as fun. Um. It's, it, things are di- very difficult for the EDC. There, you know, there was, there was already like revenue streams that were just disappearing over the last year. Uh, but then with the federal shutdown, there's a whole bunch more that they're now not able to access. So they're actually, I think, laying off six staff members and then the remaining staff members are. Uh, most, most of them are put, being put on like shared work programs. So they're being moved from. Uh, from salary to hourly employees and their, their hours are being reduced and it is, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a really difficult. Time. If, if the federal shutdown uh un-shuts down, they'll, they'll be able to, eh, quickly. They'll be able to bring some of those employees back that they're kind of sparing on, on, on this, this shared work program. But uh, i- it is, it is gonna be tough. There, some of their different programs are gonna be eliminated. The Washington Center for Women in Business is going away. The, the money that they were getting from the SBA. It just, it, it doesn't exist anymore. Um, there's a couple other programs that are just gonna disappear. They're, they're going to continue doing training and counseling, but having the, the various different uh. Uh, like subsections within their, they call it their economic development ecosystem. It's, it's gonna, it's gonna be pared down considerably. So it was not a fun meeting. Um. But uh, work will go on.
Can I ask how, um, you know, we joined kind of part of this consortium with the other counties and we're part of. A bigger group, like how is that right now affecting? Has there been any discussions with that group on kind of?
The South Salish EDD, we're referring to. We didn't get an update on that.
Okay.
And Josh, are you any more familiar with how that is set up? Yeah, we, I received, no, I was wondering. But uh, I, I don't know if they got that. I, I had to leave probably about ten, fifteen minutes before the questions began.
Commissioner, here, do you have any thoughts?
Um, since yesterday. Um, let's see. Um. I attended uh the uh LISO launch party. That was just a community event, which is. The Legal Immigration um Services of Olympia. So it's a, a new um. A new nonprofit that is here in Olympia that's going to be providing immigration services to, um, to residents. And so it was uh pretty great to talk to um many people and, yeah.
Who's like?
Stephanie.
Okay.
Um, yeah, and so.
Okay, so just community.
It's community, yeah, community leaders. Um, and Representative Doglia was there. And so she talked about kind of what the state is going to be looking at in terms of uh providing support for these type of organizations. Um, so um, more to come. They are just, they're just launching right now and they're. In the process of, of just collecting a database. So they're pretty brand new.
Nice. Is your close?
Yes, um. So, let's see. I have a Jazzcom update, but let me just check and make sure that's the only one I have. Yep, okay. Um, so at our last Jazzcom meeting, um, we went over the twenty twenty-six budget. And um, all of you should have in your inbox a forwarded message from the county manager with the budget narrative. Um, but we initially, when the budget was presented, um. The assessments were projected at a one point nine percent decrease, which is approximately for the county about twenty thousand dollars. And so the assessments were projected at uh one million sixty-one thousand two hundred seventy-one. Um, but through the discussion, there was some feedback given about remaining static versus. Um, implementing the decrease, which uh the reduction reflects a combination of operational adjustments. And shared cost reductions as well as um adjustments to shared revenues and offsets. So. Yeah, we were presented with a budget that had the slight decrease, but Jazzcom members were discussing the need to. Remain static potentially. So um, we're kind of in between those two numbers, the one million sixty-one thousand and the. The one million eighty-one, eighty thousand.
Worst case scenario, it's the same as last.
Yes, yeah, it won't go up.
Which, which what we budgeted probably.
Yeah.
Commissioner, we can say your hand first.
Thank you. Um, I'm guessing the board will vote on this in December. I mean, if we can bring a twen- an additional twenty thousand dollars to our general fund, um, that would be my inclination. On taking the savings. Um, just looking at our huge budget shortfall.
Commissioner Forni.
Yeah, I mean, I said, the same thing, twenty thousand dollars is uh, anything, anything helps when we're, you know, flipping over couch cushions. Is, is that, uh, has that vote already been taken and Jazzcom's decided or is that an upcoming vote?
That'll be upcoming.
Um.
Okay, so like, are you, are you, how will you determine your vote? Will you, you take feedback from us or? Do you know how you'll vote?
Well, so the process is, of course, I report out, get board feedback, bring that to the discussion and then kind of hear what others have to say. Um, how I'll vote, I think that kind of depends on the discussion, but I'll definitely bring the board feedback to Jazzcom. And Commissioner Minzer, Commissioner Grant's not here, do you have any feedback you want me to bring back to the commission?
Well, I, 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 yeah, I don't know the ins and outs of what you're looking at. I certainly would join my colleagues in saying that, you know. Twenty thousand dollars is, doesn't sound like a lot, but in this environment, it, it's meaningful to us in a way that I haven't seen in my seven years here. So. You know, if there's that opportunity to, to do something like that, I think that builds trust with Jazzcom too. Like. It's not, you don't often see that. Shows that they're doing responsibly with their, you know, stewardship of, of our resources. So. I would, I would urge you to think, you know, strongly about, about supporting that um, that ori- original proposal. You know, unless you heard something just overwhelmingly compelling.
Right, that makes sense, yeah. I'll definitely bring that feedback um back. The conversation we kind of had at Jazzcom. We revisited the topic of the uh reserves and how reliant Jazzcom is on their reserves and how. Over time, they're hoping to increase the assessments to offset the need to dip into the reserves. So that was part of the conversation. But yeah, understanding the budget situation we're in, I'll definitely bring that feedback to the next meeting.
Thank you.
So, yeah, the, the re- the not using reserves thing, or as I recall, that's gonna cause the, our costs to balloon. A- as we go forward. Um, but there is a reserve and it's, it's fairly large. So I, I ju- I guess I'll just. I, I, I hope we can get an email from you on how that meeting goes and I, I would, I would like, I would be curious also how you vote. Or how the votes are all laid out. When that happens.
Okay. What information do you want me to share in the email? Just the summary of the meeting?
Yeah, the results and how, how people voted.
Okay. Perfect, I can do that.
So I had, Commissioner.
That's all I have. Are there any other, is there anything else anyone wants me to consider or bring back? That's all I have. Are there any other, is there anything else anyone wants me to consider or bring back? Okay, thank you.
Perfect, that's what this is for, these kind of conversations. So I do not have an update, uh. And Commissioner Grant's not here, so.
All right, um.
Commissioner items.
Thank you. Well, I was like, this is a commissioner item and it's kind of, so, um, I just wanted to give the board just a heads up. Um, at the risk pool, uh, we have, uh, they've shared the packet with us where they're going to be recommending. A 35% increase. I will. I just want to make the board aware that I will be voting against that and I will be making a motion for a 20%. Um, well, it might tighten things up at the risk pool level. I just, that's going to be a, a huge hit to us. And that's not something that we can carry. So, um, just reviewing that packet that was sent to us today. Just wanted to make the board aware of, um, I will let you know what comes out of that next week, but.
Effective when?
Uh, effective.
Thirty percent's a lot.
Thirty-five, like I was.
What is it, dollar?
Yeah, what's.
It doesn't really say, like, it basically just says like, um, it, 35% was the least amount that they're recommending, right? And that kind of was like the highlight piece. And I just got a stomach ache just thinking about it, um.
Sure, there's a couple commas involved.
Probably, uh, but they didn't attach the, um, the actual numbers and, and the presentation that got shared out, so.
We'll work with Brian to round that up. Thanks for the heads up though.
So, yeah.
Like what, so, I mean, I know like that gets driven up if there's like an inordinate number of clean, like, like litigation settlements and stuff. Are there other things that drive that number up? Like?
It, it could just be the cost of litigation, right? Like as inflation hits, um, I'm sure they'll give a report out. So it's the drivers. If we're looking at 35% as the lowest, that has to be more than, way more than inflation. That's probably, there's been some big payouts.
They have talked about, same case, their big payouts for lawsuits, just in general.
There's been a couple of them that have been increasing and I, I believe that, uh, Brian's going to be reporting out on that. I don't know.
Sure.
What they're talking about, there were some like juvie.
I didn't want, I was like, I don't know how much I can say about that.
Yeah, it's.
I think that's what we're in for for the next little while.
I, I would be curious to analyze like, cause. Like, like there's two really, there's two broad variables that you could imagine. One is that like worse stuff is happening in, in society and being put forward, right? Like worse stuff's happening. Like so. Or the other one is that juries are reacting differently to this, you know, to the same stuff. That, a- a- and that's really surprises me honestly, because people are becoming more litigious.
More what?
Litigious. Yeah, but you know, it's, I don't know, just with the, with, with the politics in the community and the way the world is. Like the idea that like juries are getting more and more, you know, uh, generous, I guess you'd say, or whatever, with these really, really big verdicts seems. It kind of, it, it strikes me as counterintuitive. So I'm just curious. I mean, like what is driving the. People studying the, you know, jur- they talked to jurors afterwards and like what, what, why is, what's the theory behind why juries would be giving bigger and bigger?
Listen to the radio and there's com- there's commercials for suing people and for suing public agencies.
And lawyers are always like the least, like we're the.
Would you like to sue so and so? Call 1-800.
But I mean, the jurors are people that have to be saved. Oh, we want to give, you know, these incredible judgments and, you know, they don't have to do that. They decide. Surprising to me, but anyway, it's just interesting.
Probably think that until it's them. Right? Well, like change when it's our change.
Some slick attorney walks in in his suit and tie, purple pants.
Whenever I go visit my dad in Las Vegas, in Las Vegas, like the whole town is just blanketed with billboards for attorneys.
Some of them are clever though.
And people drive like crazy. So like I totally get it because I, I, every time I go, I get in, almost get in five accidents, the way people drive. But it's like this world of just like auto litigation. Yeah, it's just amazing and we don't see that appear. All right, um, I have a question for Madam Clerk. Can you please remind me? I brought up the housing authority and I can't remember what you said about the timing of when we're going to discuss that.
I have a few applications from our recent recruitment to bring to you next week.
Next Tuesday then.
Yes, but I plan to.
Go ahead, sorry.
Maybe, well, um, we'll be reaching out though to Craig Chance.
Perfect.
Executive Director, who I've been in contact with and, um, I haven't received the same information that you received. So.
I was from the president of the board.
Yeah.
So he should be, you know, I, I would hope Craig and Jay wouldn't be telling us something completely different, but.
We just want to make sure that in addition to the ones you get from the recruitment, we get what they need accomplished so that we can send that all out as one.
Yeah.
And then we.
I mean, if we're gonna, I don't know how.
Cause there was some shuffling around of positions.
Yeah, I don't know how, um, pictured we are about having an application in our hand, but like that current board member who now qualifies for a different seat. Like if she, if she needs to send in an application, please communicate that because they may not understand that. I mean, or, or if we can just consider it in connection with them. It's, it's always good to have the equal, kind of like summary of. For each person, even if it's somebody that's been serving. So I would encourage that probably.
I would too. And, and just for, um. Knowing our commissioners, just giving you the same information and having that before you say you can make those decisions. Great.
Okay, perfect. Any other commissioner items? All right, thank you. See you guys to home consumed.
I have to send mine in.